I'll quickly review the agenda. We'll have student and school presentations, parent groups, open to the public. Three minutes per speaker for no longer than sixty minutes. We'll have our superintendent's report, our correspondence and board comments, our consent agenda. We also have two addendums. We will then take a second executive session, followed by adjourned the meeting. We do have a couple of corrections to the agenda. On the consent agenda, we are removing item twelve point zero four. And on our addendum, we have two addendums in section thirteen, item thirteen oh one and thirteen oh two, which are both supplemental memorandums of agreement with the BTA. Do we have any student or school presentations tonight? Any parent groups? Okay. We'll now have open to the public. I hope everybody's had the opportunity to sign up that wishes to speak. Before we begin speaking, I've asked Mrs. Gadsden to read our policy once more.
Public participation at board meetings. The Board of Education has established a single period for public comment at board meetings not to exceed sixty minutes. Speakers may generally comment upon any matter relating to district business. The president and/or superintendent may respond to certain other comments when all of the speakers have finished. The rules applicable to such public comment are set forth in Board Policy twelve thirty. A copy of which is available in the signup hook at the front of this room and on the district's website. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Atwell? Oh, just a reminder, I'm sorry. Just a reminder, we'll be doing, it's three minutes per speaker and it's no longer than sixty minutes. So it is now nine thirty. I'm going to use the stopwatch on my phone just to keep it honest for everyone. When you hit about two minutes and forty-five seconds, maybe I'll raise my hand a little bit or try to make eye contact so that you know the time will be coming soon.
Good morning, President of Beacon Teachers Association.
Mary Keough, Vice President of the Beacon Teachers Association.
The Beacon Teachers Association has always valued our collaborative work with the district, the Board of Education, and our community. We have endured many obstacles over the years, as well as shared many celebrations. And therefore, before I speak about some concerns that I have, that have come about this past week, I want to congratulate and celebrate all of our retirees, our tenured recipients, and our new teachers and administrators tonight. In light of the recent staffing changes this past week, the BTA officers did meet with Dr. Walkley to share our concerns regarding the staffing changes. As we communicated last week, many members of the association leadership were very concerned as to how the process was handled. Dr. Walkley, as you shared tonight, you have agreed to work with us on a different process and we look forward to that work to ensure that in the future, the process of notification and consultation with staff regarding assignments are done in a way that teachers feel valued and are given the ability to dialogue with administration to allot for information to be shared and which would benefit everyone involved. Furthermore, in our meeting with you as well as tonight, you shared your intentions and purpose and we were also able to share history and perceptions, which as we know, many folks, the perceptions are the realities for people. So with that said, we do appreciate your willingness to listen to our concerns and agree to end contract language and as well as continued meetings to work on a collaborative process that will make teachers and help teachers feel more comfortable with these type of changes and decisions that are made. Thank you.
Elise Fox?
Hello, my name is Elise Fox. I will be a junior here after summer vacation. I'm here tonight to hopefully get you to reconsider your decision to transfer teachers. I've done some research on our district's website and I'd like to quote the two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen Beacon City School District Strategic Plan. It says our goal is to create a learning environment centered on strong social emotional support systems, understanding that this is vital to maintaining a safe nursing environment where all students can learn and excel. If this is truly our goal, my question is why would we shift teachers and destroy that strong system? From personal experience, I'm aware that students thrive when they have connections with teachers. Moving all these teachers shifts the equilibrium, causing the system to crumble. These teachers have built a niche in their respective positions. The high school teachers have a mature style and personality that fits high school, not middle school, and vice versa. I've had an amazing opportunity to establish a connection with one of the teachers you've proposed to transfer. This teacher's helped me many times, whether it be schoolwork or personal advice. Said teacher never fails to keep me motivated and I believe that this connection has improved not only my grades, but myself overall as a person. I know I'm not the only student who feels this way and removing them from their niche will affect many students' work ethics. In the policy manual on the district's website, it states in the school conduct and discipline section that the Board of Education acknowledges its responsibility to protect the educational climate of the district. That being said, moving teachers disrupts that climate and affects many people in this district negatively. If one was to perceive this as a living, breathing ecosystem, plus or minus one degree, we cause the system to become chaotic. I speak on the behalf of many upset people and I hope you will reconsider this arrangement. On the pupil personnel services page, there is a quote that says, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget what you made me feel." If there's anything you can take away from my speech tonight, I hope it's my feeling of utter sadness and disappointment in this arrangement. Thank you for your time.
Danielle Faiella?
Good evening. My name is Danielle Faiella and I currently work at South Avenue. First, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to stand here before you and be heard. On Friday, June twelfth, I was shocked to find out that for an undisclosed reason, I was being moved from my home at South Avenue, where I've spent the last fifteen years. I was completely blindsided. At that moment, a million things went through my head. Why me? What did I do wrong? Why am I in this room with all these other good teachers? I haven't been able to sleep, I haven't been able to eat, I'm truly sick over this. I promised my kids every year that my door is always open to come back and talk for any reason. How will they feel when they come back and I'm not there? Here's an example of how some of my kids are being impacted. A fourth grade child wrote me a note and said, "Don't leave. I love you still. There's no other teacher besides you that I can talk to. I'm too hurt to see you go. I don't want to be by myself." At South Avenue, we are a puzzle that fit together perfectly. If you remove one piece from the puzzle and try another piece, it just doesn't fit. That's not progress and that will not bring higher test scores. When you take someone from their home, from their colleagues and children, past and present, that aren't her life and mean the world to her, we all lose. People yield the best results when they're the happiest. My third grade team is amazing. We fit together perfectly. We have scores that are high because we came together and supported each other. We are one of the strongest teams. This has been substantiated by numerous comments from different grade levels at our school. The last two years, they have pushed me to be a better person, made me believe I could do amazing things, and we share our lives together. Breaking us up will inevitably lower our morale collectively and hurt us, as well as our children. We stand here before you as a strong unit, wearing our shirts from a triathlon that I never imagined I could accomplish. They were done late before I was and they found me and ran three miles with me to the end, pushing me not to give up. We are trying our hardest to stay together to better our school and our district. As it stands here now, I have yet to been given a valid reason for my move. However, I can think of many valid reasons why staying at South Avenue will be beneficial to the district and the community. For example, I have a very strong relationship with my children and their parents, which I have cultivated over the past fifteen years. This is not something that happens overnight. Secondly, my team stands beside me, having a relationship that works for many reasons. We've never been happier or more productive. I respectfully request that you please reconsider transferring me and allowing me to stay at my home where I belong, where my heart is. Thank you.
Wendy Mann?
Hello, I'm President of the Rockville Middle School, BTA. I'm just calling or I'm just here to talk about the movement of the seventh grade teachers. My son's getting ready to go into seventh grade and when I found out a lot of them were moving up to high school, a lot of them had been there for fifteen years and so forth, and we're just trying to figure out what accomplishments with moving middle school teachers up to the high school and vice versa, when they're used to teaching at their own, with their own age group. They're, they're used to accommodating higher, like the higher grades versus the lower grades. So that's got it.
Robert Balt?
Good evening, my name is Robert Balt. I'm a teacher at the, at the high school here. First, I would like to thank Dr. Walkley and members of the Board of Education for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As I know, time is, is of the essence, you see, my message is relatively short and simple. Dr. Walkley, when you spoke with us last week about the transfers of up to twenty-five teachers, at first, I applauded your insight and initiative to realize that we, the teachers of the Beacon City School District, have enormous unrealized and under-realized potential and that you told us our talents are needed in areas different from where we are currently. We need such forward thinking and if we can move our district to where many of us know we can be, I would like to be a part of that. However, I am proud to say that I completed my seventeenth year at Beacon High School. I have taught every grade level here and I proudly represented our school six times in Albany as a district ambassador. I have attended New York English Council conventions every year I've been in the school district and I have presented my research and I've shared my knowledge with colleagues on the local, state, and even on the national level. I list these achievements and accomplishments not for my own recognition, nor for the accolades, but I do it because I feel welcomed, I feel validated, I feel championed in this environment and I'm a proud member of the staff. Under the esteemed leadership of Dr. Seerlin, I, he drives me to achieve most I can for my students and those in my charge. As a district, we have spoken at night about the climate and culture of our respective schools and I am proud of this work that has done to that end. My fear tonight is that many of the proposed transfers, the movement of successful talented educators to unknown, unproven environments, will do much to undermine much of the hard diligent work already accomplished in these areas. I have yet one more deeper concern. The artifact that I handed in this year for my APPR was a fifty-page document where I researched the many facets of place-based learning and the establishment of a positive learning environment for our students. I suggest to you that a particular strength individually and collectively shared by the teachers affected by this proposed transfers is the establishment of set communities. As you know, the teachers affected by the proposed transfers have established a wonderful rapport with students, with parents, in and out of the classroom while coaching, some while serving as class advisors, and it cannot be simply established overnight. These vital connections are the direct result of meticulous, time-consuming work of becoming threaded and embedded into the fragile fabric that is our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Balt. Anya Sandoval?
Hi, my name is Anya Sandoval and I'm a sophomore at Beacon High School. Can I speak?
Anya, I don't think that they can hear you.
Oh, okay. Having a successful education is not just about hard work and getting good grades. Yes, being focused, setting goals, studying and doing our homework, all play a major part in our lives as students, but to me, the teachers play a major role in their life, as well as the lives of other students. They are a familiar, strong support system for all of us and have become mentors throughout preschool. We have built relationships with our teachers, trust, and great bond. For me, having a teacher that I've learned from and trusted has helped me together during my years at Beacon High School. The teachers at Beacon High School have opened their policy and their open mind. They've taught me the importance of getting involved in school, at home, and in my own life. They've shown me the value and the individuality. They are the reason why I have the courage to speak up, stand up here, to voice my opinions, and stick up for what I am passionate about. This is the reason for my speech. It is not just I, but many of us students who want to fight for our teachers to stay. You must not take away the teachers from us. It is detrimental to our education. By taking the teachers away, you will also take away the familiarity of the school from us. I'm not here to demand anything, I simply want to press that the Board would reconsider their decision to take our teachers away. I want to make sure that all options have been exhausted completely for making such a drastic change in our everyday lives. The teachers leaving is a change that impacts students the most and changed our lives. Thank you.
Mrs. Winkelman?
Hi, Angie Winkelman, Rockville Middle School, seventh grade English teacher, also Beacon School District resident. I'm not going to detail my personal reasons for this. I sent a letter to the Board detailing those. I'm more going to take a little bit of a historical perspective. I've been in the district for twenty-seven years and it was an absolutely lovely presentation that we saw from Mr. Mulhern and we all know he did a fantastic job and he's retired. And let's slide his ponytail into his job, because she's also an administrator and should be able to do it equally, well, maybe even better. And I've never heard anything so ridiculous until last Friday, when I was told that for some reason, I would be a better high school English teacher than I am a middle school English teacher. I've been here for a long time. I've been transferred voluntarily from the high school to the middle school. I've taught every level and I love teaching middle school. When I tell people in the supermarket, "I teach seventh graders," they say, "Oh my gosh, why would you do such a thing?" Because I love it. I absolutely love what I do every day. And not a lot of people love twelve-year-olds. And anybody that has a twelve-year-old can attest to that. We shouldn't take people away from the children that they love, because that's what works. That is historically what works. I also believe that it's the first time in my twenty-seven years that so many transfers have been made without the consent of the building principals. We were told that our building principals fought to keep us and I have a serious question about why we would be transferring people against building-level requests when those should be the people who know best, especially into positions where they don't know where they're going to be filled. And finally, while I would like to state that, well, maybe not all, most of these transfers are mistakes and we all make mistakes and it's what we do with those mistakes. It's what I tell my students all the time, it's what I tell my personal children. When you make a mistake, figure out how to learn from it and how to make it right. And that's what we're asking here, is let's look at the mistake, figure out how to make it right, and do what's best for the children of this district. Because we're all here at almost ten o'clock at night because we care about them. It's not that I can teach at the high school, it's because we care about the kids and we want what's best for the children. Thank you.
Pam Keel?
Hi, my name is Pam Kyle. I have a senior, or a graduate, who is graduating this year and she came home last week and said that there was going to be this teacher transfer. One of them is Ms. Marinaccia and I am here with them on behalf to present this to the Board. It's four hundred and forty-five signatures on the petition to keep her here at the high school. I believe what Mrs. Winkelman just stated, it is the students. This represents what these students feel for this teacher. She has provided so much guidance as a teacher and as a person. Personally, she has offered so much for my daughter this year as a senior and I honestly believe that nobody's looking at the big picture. If it's a teacher, it's going to be better at the high school or at the junior high. Why? Is it because they have a connection with the student? Can they offer something more? I don't know if a junior high student would appreciate the efforts that some teachers at the high school provide, meaning they might not be intellectually there yet to understand the concept of what this teacher is providing for students. I don't understand why there can't be a program set up for these teachers that they would say, "This would be better for the junior high. If the, if the high school teachers are better at providing that, then have them set up a program instead of actually moving people that inspire these students to learn and go forward in life." So I'd like to give this to you. Thank you.
April Farley?
Good evening, I'm April Farley, Justice Lieutenant, towards City of Beacon. And one of the best things about being a legislator is giving an accommodation to the youth. We're at the county meetings, we set the budget, we make policies and set rules, but I was extremely excited and so overjoyed to have the opportunity on our last board meeting on June eighth to give an accommodation to the Green Team, which are our high school students here at Beacon High School. They work extremely hard and the accommodation was actually for their ten-year anniversary. These students, just wanted to say, "From Corrano to Water, the Extension Green Team Community Gardening Program empowers the urban use to be effective community change agents by immersing them into the local food system, teaches life, work skills through hands-on experiences, forming gardening, health, nutrition, and entrepreneurship and leadership." These skills that they actually have take them throughout their life. Most of the students that work Green Team are successful now in jobs and currently going to college. These types of programs need to be more and I, and I hope that we can do more funding so that more students can actually have an opportunity, they get an opportunity in the fall, the spring, and the summer and what they're growing right now is that they can actually purchase at the Beacon Farmer's Market. I wanted to also thank Dr. Barbara Walkley and all the Board of Education, the retirees, everyone tonight that was honored, the two thousand and fifteen graduates this year. I believe that Beacon High School has a phenomenal team and I was completely honored also to be a part of the Care and Culture Committee where we sat as parents, teachers, and people from the community to try and see how we can help our students and how we can help reduce the dropout rate for the Beacon High School. Some of the things that were suggested were also including us in the Liberty Partnership Program with Mayor's College, the upper bound programs, also trying to understand the care and culture and how the students can bond with the, with the school. Now, one aspect that was actually missing was the actual students. So as we were talking, we were saying, "Well, the care and the culture, how we respond to the students." We don't want to speak for ourselves, but we want the students to actually speak. And this evening, it's a really honorable time to actually hear how the students are relating to the transfer and I can relate to that as well because as we are speaking on how to keep them from dropping out, getting discouraged, having good grades. Some people don't have connections at home and they look to their teachers as family members, people that they commit to, so it's an extended family, people for years, people that may have been transferred, may have been within the school system for some decades and parents and can have their siblings, you know, see different teachers, that sort of thing. So I hope that we can take kid in consideration because the purpose of our committee was to understand the care and culture of the students to kind of improve the relationship and I think that will work. Thank you so much. You guys have a good evening.
Has Ulrich?
Firstly, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Cassandra Ulrich and I will be a junior here at Beacon High School after this summer vacation. I'd like to start off with something my father told me when I was younger and that is, people can steal anything from you, but accept your education. And right now, I feel like we are being, our education is being stolen from us because you're moving the people that move us. And why? Why is this fair to students and teachers? Whose idea was it to try and do things without asking opinions or taking polls? Why do you write by your wallet when you can do right by the children and the community? Forgive me, but why should we have respect for a system of people that work so hard to screw us and the hard-working teachers of the HHS over? Maybe that's just me and I suppose it's not all my business. I just wanted to write by Ms. Marinaccia and the other teachers who are being unfairly moved. And please hear me as loudly and clearly as you can when I say, "Ms. Marinaccio saved my life." If anyone deserves to stay at the HHS is Ms. Marinaccio. She does everything she could possibly do for her class and anyone who is in her class. She's a good-hearted woman and so are all the other teachers that are being moved. She's amazing and an inspiration to our students, so please reconsider this reassignment. They're shaping the future of our town, our state, our country, and even our world. Thank you.
Junisella Junior?
Good evening, my name is Junisella, Beacon High School, class of two thousand and fourteen. I spent the past year at Valleyport Military College and one week from today, I will begin the journey of my life as a cadet at West Point, class of two thousand and nineteen. I'm a freshman from twelfth grades. I was extensively involved in the music program. I was a two-sport athlete and an honor student. My intentions, my intentions tonight are not to accuse and to attack our school district. I'm here to seek information and answers on why so many teachers in our district are being involuntarily transferred. You may ask why this concerns me, if I am no longer a student in the district. Well, as far back as I can remember, Beacon City Schools has had one major consistency in terms of education and that's its teachers. People can have their opinions about the district, however, many of my peers and I would not be where we are today if it wasn't for the bonds we've created with the faculty and staff we have come to know and trust. I can only hope that my younger brother and sister will receive the best chance of success just as students before them have. Correct me if I'm wrong, please, but is it my understanding that very few people have had a say in the move in efforts to improve education for our children? But I could see shuffling around a few people here and there gradually, but to move, or again, correct me if I'm wrong, over twenty, I believe such a drastic move is going to But I was extremely excited and so overjoyed to have the opportunity on our last board meeting on June 8th to give an accommodation to the green team, which are our high school students here at Beacon High School. They work extremely hard. And the accommodation was actually for their 10-year anniversary. These students, just wanted to say, from Cora to corporate extension, green team, community gardening program, empowers the urban use to be effective community change agents by immersing them into the local food system, teaches life, work skills through hands-on experiences, forming gardening, health, nutrition, and entrepreneurship and leadership. These skills that they actually have take them throughout their life. Most students that work green teams are successful now in jobs and currently going to college. These types of programs need to be more. And I hope that we can do more funding so that more students can actually have an opportunity. They get an opportunity in the fall, the spring, and the summer. And what they're growing right now is that they can actually purchase at the Beacon Farmer's Market. I wanted to also thank Dr. Barbara Walkley and all the board of education, the retirees, everyone tonight that was honored, the 2015 graduates this year. I believe that Beacon High School has a phenomenal team. And I was completely honored also to be a part of the care and culture committee, where we sat as parents, teachers, and people from the community to try and see how we can help our students and how we can help reduce the dropout rate for the Beacon High School. Some of the things that were suggested were also including us in the Liberty Partnership Program with Mary's College, the upper bound programs. Also trying to understand the care and culture and how the students can bond with the school. Now, one aspect that was actually missing was the actual students. So as we were talking, we were saying, "Well, the care and the culture, how we respond to the students." We don't want to speak for ourselves, but we want the students to actually speak. And this evening is a really honorable time to actually hear how the students are relating to the transfer. And I can relate to that as well because as we are speaking on how to keep them from dropping out, getting discouraged, having good grades. Some people don't have connections at home and they look to their teachers as family members, people that they commit to. So it's an extended family, people for years. People that may have been transferred may have been within the school system for some decades and parents and can have their siblings, you know, see different teachers, that sort of thing. So I hope that we can take kid in consideration because the purpose of our committee was to understand the care and culture of the students to kind of improve the relationship. And I think that will work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys have a wonderful evening.
Has Ulrich?
Firstly, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Cassandra Ulrich. And I will be a junior here at Beacon High School after this summer vacation. I'd like to start off with something my father told me when I was younger. And that is, people can steal anything from you except your education. And right now, I feel like we are being... Our education is being stolen from us because you're moving the people that move us. And why? Why is this fair to the students and teachers? Whose idea was it to try and do things without asking opinions or taking polls? Why do you write by your wallet when you can do right by the children of the community? Forgive me, but why should we have respect for a system of people that works so hard to screw us and the hardworking teachers of the HHS over? Maybe that's just me, and I suppose it's not all my business. I just wanted to write about Ms. Marinaccio and the other teachers who are being unfairly moved. And please hear me as loudly and clearly as you can when I say Ms. Marinaccio saved my life. If anyone deserves to stay at the HHS is Ms. Marinaccio. She does everything she could possibly do for her class and anyone who lives in her class. She's a good-hearted woman, and so are all the other teachers that are being moved. She's amazing and an inspiration to our students. So please reconsider this reassignment. They're shaping the future of our town, our state, our country, and even our world. Thank you.
Junisella Junior?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Junisella, Beacon High School, class of 2014. I spent the past year at Valley Ford Military College. And one week from today, I will begin the journey of my life as a cadet at West Point, class of 2019. I'm a freshman from 12th grade. I was extensively involved in the music program. I was a two-sport athlete and an honor student. My intentions tonight are not to accuse and to attack our school district. I'm here to seek information and answers on why so many teachers in our district are being involuntarily transferred. You may ask why this concerns me if I am no longer a student in the district. Well, as far back as I can remember, Beacon City Schools has had one major consistency in terms of education, and that's its teachers. People can have their opinions about the district. However, many of my peers and I would not be where we are today if it wasn't for the bonds we've created with the faculty and staff we have come to know and trust. I can only hope that my younger brother and sister will receive the best chance of success just as students before them have. Correct me if I'm wrong, please, but is it my understanding that very few people have had a say in the move in efforts to improve education for our children? But I could see shuffling around a few people here and there gradually. But to move, or again, correct me if I'm wrong, over 20, I believe such a drastic move is going to upset the system. In the past few years, we've seen superintendents and building principals come and go. But the same teachers have been there going the extra mile to not only help our children, but to help out our community. I can attest to this, and this should be celebrated. Don't you think the kids have picked up on this? Some of the kids in the district are here tonight just to try and convince the board that they are already in good hands at the high school and throughout. That's got to say something. Again, not to accuse and point fingers, but had the new members of our district had time to really get to know our schools and how they work to make such a decision? Two of the questions that I have, a few overthought, whenever you guys come up to think about it. But were the principals in agreement with all of these transfers? Wouldn't they have a better idea of where these teachers belong since they are the ones evaluating in the classroom during the day and seeing their day-to-day transactions? I think another question that many people had, what is the specific plan to improve each of the elementary schools? And how these tie into that plan? And as far as the middle school, because this is a K through 12 transition as far as I'm understanding? And does the elementary school tie into this plan? And the middle school, is there a plan for subject areas? Especially since the middle school has come off the focus list as mentioned before. In conclusion, I believe that several of the teachers in question have made their niche for excelling in what they do, where they currently do it. It is my opinion that each has built a positive reputation of success. But now that's being taken away from the future success of students in Beacon. If it's not broken, don't fix it. The public doesn't know what goes on behind the scenes. But please remember, in the end, it's the children that will suffer if this decision turns out. This change should at all, if at all, be a gradual one. Therefore, requiring teamwork with all hands on deck from every aspect of kindergarten through 12th grade.
Thank you, Mr. Sel.
Thank you.
Ms. Marinaccio?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexa Marinaccio. You can hear me, right? My name is Alexa Marinaccio. I teach science and have taught science here at Beacon High School for the last six years. I'm being involuntarily transferred to Ramout Middle School. I believe the position is 7th grade life science. I have had great success here. I can let you know that it's my second year in a row having 100% passing rate for Regent's Living Environment. I can let you know that I have over 90% mastery this year and I believe as well last year. But the truth of the matter is what makes me a good teacher is that I connect with students. I care about their lives. I care about what's going on. I help them with their college essays. I help them look at colleges after school, math, or school hours. I want to, you know, put on events at the school. I've put on powder pop for the last four years. We put on a fabulous talent show. I don't know if anyone attended, but a phenomenal talent show fundraiser, a spaghetti dinner. And all of these events, the truth of the matter, have changed my life and they've made me a better teacher. So I'm not going to use the full three minutes, but I do want to let you know that I make a difference every day here at Beacon High School. I'm highly effective, and I don't believe that moving me to the middle school will make me a better teacher or make me more effective. I believe that the best spot for me is in Room C-133 at Beacon High School, teaching Regent's Living Environment, marine biology, conceptual earth, conceptual earth conclusion. But my place is with the high school students. Thank you for your time.
Susan Hollister?
I am Susan Hollister, taxpayer, part-time employee at Beacon City Schools. And my concern is, having come from outside a school district and working in a management field, I know that any time a business wants to hire, fire, promote, relocate an employee, there's a process of criteria that needs to be met and needs to be followed. And this decision cannot be made by one person alone, ever. So as a taxpayer, I think we would all like to know the criteria used in making this decision to move 25 teachers. Who was involved in the decision-making process? And how did it all come about? I also talk to on behalf of a daughter who will be in the 7th grade next year. And having been a student in the 5th grade, where we completely turned her on her head and taught her Common Core math in the 5th grade, and now going into the 7th grade, you hope to bring a 10th grade high school teacher down to the 7th grade to teach her Common Core, in my opinion, is not in the best interest of my child. Thank you.
Andrea Davis?
Hello, everyone. Andrea Davis. I have three children in the school district, and I'm an educator as well. All too often, the negative is only heard. And so therefore, I would like to cite some positive feedback regarding our teachers here in the Beacon City School District, specifically as I'm going to note the following. The current 7th grade Blue Team and its superb administrators, Mr. Solfish, Mrs. Orser, and Mr. Giametta at Ramout Middle School. Mrs. Lynch, Mrs. DeLeo, Mr. Norris, Mrs. Winkelman, Mrs. Decandia, Mr. Chad, Mrs. Sorrello, Mrs. Lestana, and Mrs. Wright. This is a thank you that I wrote to them and to the superintendent as well, and wanted to share with each of you in the public. Before the school year closes, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart for the exceptional education that you have all provided, not only my son with, but to all the students at RMS. From the beginning of the school year to the end, your entire team was top-notch. To start off, the amount of passion and sincere love that you show for this very difficult and ever-changing profession just won me over. You're constantly attending professional development workshops to enhance your teaching and the students' learning. Your materials, PowerPoints, and use of technology were always on the forefront and ahead of the times. The way that you keep the students engaged and excited about school learning is pretty impressive, especially at the middle school level. You've always provided your students with a hands-on, multi-sensory approach to learning and have included lessons to make every subject interesting and innovative. Then there's a way that you are with the students that I've also experienced firsthand on my countless of times that I've been in the building and volunteered for different events. You're all sweet, kind, and sensitive, yet upfront, letting the students know of your expectations. Your team has a firm, yet kind approach in which the students know that they need to listen, but be respectful and kind, but all at the same time that they will enjoy the lesson or task at hand and have fun in the process. Your teaching style has wowed me over, too. You have all such class and grace in doing so. And then you teach the necessary and have a solid and strong knowledge in the way in which you do so. But you all go above and beyond the norm and also provide enriching activities to challenge the students and make them think at another level as well. This rapport that you have with the students is so wonderful. Not only can they rely on you as their educator, but I've seen oh-so-many of you sit with them, console them, and have conversations with students beyond the school realm. Many of you even invite them in to have lunch with you and stay after school, too. For extra help and support, or to just spend polytime with a student who needs to talk or needs someone to confide in. How wonderful. Applause needed again. In addition to all of the above, the parent-teacher communication is fabulous. There was never a point in the whole school year that I didn't know what was going on in my son's classrooms. Each week via email, I was updated on the teachings, what was being done in class, a project, test, or exam coming up, et cetera. I was always so grateful for that. Your team is truly remarkable in every way, shape, and form. I considered my son, as well as all the students and families you've touched, by being such wonderful teachers, very blessed to have had you all. I can only hope that some decision will be changed and that you can continue to keep doing what you do so well together at RMS. As an educator, I know that change and shifts sometimes are inevitable on a small scale. However, decisions and shifts of this capacity are not educationally sound for the students nor for the educators involved. This is unjust. For if things are broken, then please don't fix them. It's way too much change, way too fast. My heart goes out to all of the teachers who are affected by this.
Andrea Davis?
Thank you.
It looks like pet looks.
Good evening. Pat Lucas. I'm here to read a letter from Christine Garino. I also, before I start, I wanted to congratulate the teachers that had the courage to come up here and plug before the board. I know there'll probably be a lot more of their inferior reprisal from the board and from the superintendent. Dear Ms. Walkley, I'm writing to urge you to reconsider the decision to involuntarily transfer Alexa Marinaccio from her position as science teacher in the high school to Ramout Middle School. I worked with Alexa for three years at Beacon High School and found her to be an excellent teacher, colleague, and friend. Alexa possesses a rare combination of technical skill and an immense drive to help her students be successful. She has an uncanny ability to connect with each student in her classes and forms strong relationships with every child. This is an invaluable and incalculable skill because when she feels connected with her... When children feel connected with their teachers, they strive for and often achieve, and force surpass their goals. Though the designers of Common Core seem to believe that teaching merely involves standing in front of a classroom full of students and reading script, you and I and other educators know that this is far from reality. When a teacher has changed assignments, it's disruptive and it can take more than a year to adjust and become familiar with the standards to be met and methods to be used. Can it be done? Of course. But the students will not reap the benefits of having a teacher who knows how to best deliver the material, can anticipate areas of student confusion, and has mastered multiple modes of delivery to differentiate instruction and reach every student in the room. Alexa has designed and continues to refine multiple curricula for the students in the science electives offered at the high school. While I was teaching at Beacon High School, I never knew which elective I'd be teaching the next year as those teaching assignments rotated among the faculty. This is disruptive for any teacher who works to refine a curriculum one year and then has to teach another course the following year. Alexa shared the excellent materials and resources that she labored over and we collaborated so we can paddle each new elective without having to start from scratch each year. This way, we shared a scaffold to hang our teaching style on. I'm going to just kind of move on because I know my time's coming up. If the goal of moving Alexa to the middle school is to improve students' science literacy, this doesn't make sense. Why move an effective teacher to an unfair, unfamiliar assignment where the teacher will need a minimum of a year to become familiar with and prepare adequately for the new curriculum and then years to refine it? If Alexa's skills are so valuable, perhaps a better solution is to allow her to teach a seminar during the superintendent's conference day where she can help others teach home their skills, so everyone can become more successful. This makes more sense than uprooting teachers from their positions, which will likely result in temporary decrease in the effectiveness of all teachers. In conclusion, the decision seems rather arbitrary and will result in more disruption to the students learning that it will improve student achievement. The students don't want it. The high school administrators don't want it. The high school teachers don't want it, and the parents don't want it. Simply, it doesn't make sense. Beacon suffers from a lack of consistency from the top down, and this decision simply exacerbates the problem. Sincerely, Christine Garino.
That's completed all that have signed up to speak tonight. Was there anyone else, because we have a few minutes, that wished to speak? There's somebody coming down the aisle.
Hi, my name is Meredith Huer. I'm a parent of two children in South Africa. I first wanted to thank you, Dr. Walkley. My 5th grader just finished with the sharp overnight, and it was really amazing and memorable for everyone. And my husband was a chevron. We got to see the very real team-building work that they did there. And this is something that almost didn't happen. So I'm really grateful that you were able to talk to the community and make it work. Thank you very much. I also wanted to say that this change is... I know there's so much that I don't know about this decision-making. But it does seem like a lot at once. And I should feel in good hands because we have the best teachers ever in Beacon. We have felt that every teacher we've had has been the most gifted teacher we've had. And then the next year, we go on and get yet another amazing teacher. And I'm sure these teachers can do well wherever they go. But we've had such a disruptive, almost decade in Beacon that I wonder if it's too much at once. And I also wonder what, you know, the sort of unintended consequences of when a teacher has started something that isn't just their job, like an after-school program or some special club or something. And does the new teacher take that on? Or what happens with that, which is also really, really important to the student's experience? And lastly, I heard, but I don't know if it's true, that now one music teacher will be shared between high school and the middle school. And I was also concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Underwood. I'm a senior here at Beacon. I'll be graduating this Saturday. Initially, I came here tonight to support Ms. Marinaccio, a teacher that's had an immense impact on my years here at Beacon High School. But sitting here, listening to more of some of my former teachers and other teachers that I don't know, I had to come up and say something. It's just, I want you guys to think tonight about, you know, all the lives you could be impacting with this decision. And there's probably a better way to go about it. And also, I want to thank you for hearing us tonight, hearing our voices. Thank you.
Was there anyone else that wished to speak?
Hi, my name is Carolis DeVall. I've lived in Beacon now for 11 months, so this is my first time. My son is Ramout on the Blue Team. When we first moved here, we lived up toward our entire lives. We came up and first day to school, my son cried every day, to the point of throwing up because he was so miserable here. His teachers supported him emotionally. They took the time to make sure that he fit in. They cared for him. They worked with him after school. They did whatever they had to do. They suggested that he go into the honors class. But he's smart. He's not very motivated, but he's very smart. He was not very happy with me, but I did it anyway. They pushed him and prodded him and believed in him. And now, when he found he's going into honors next year, each year, they changed my child's life. I could not have done it without their support. Ms. Lynch, Ms. Winkelman, Ms. Tomlin, Mr. Norris. All of the Blue Team teachers were phenomenal. I came from a school district where you did not hear about anything with your child unless he was promiscuous. No conferences, no emails, no nothing. This has opened my eyes to what my children have here at Beacon as an opportunity for their education. They fit in so well, and I've heard that the schools at the high school do, too. So I really don't understand how this is going to benefit our children by moving these teachers who do what they do so well. Thank you.
My name is William Castaldi. I'm a social studies teacher at Beacon High School. And I just want to take a moment of your time. I've been here 20 years, and I've seen a lot of change throughout those 20 years. And I wanted to just have you understand that when there's massive changes like this, it can upset things for a period of time. I've seen it multiple times throughout my time here. I think you get the most out of people when you at least have a conversation with them. Ask them their thoughts. Ask them what they want out of their careers here. Because that's what they are, their careers. This isn't a job. We work hard every day. We impact your children, and all of us love what we do. I'm not asking you to necessarily change your decision, but I'm asking you to think about the... but I'm asking you to think about the way that you've impacted the student body and the professionals here. I'm gonna show up every day. I'm gonna do my job. I'm gonna care for the kids that are put before me. Because that's what we do. We teach. We love our kids. And it doesn't matter if they're in the middle school, the elementary school, the high school. That's why we're here. However, I do think that for some, you will get more out of them if they feel like they've been cared for. If they feel as though, what we preach here, a culture of care and respect is truly evident in Beacon. And not speaking for myself, but speaking, you know, at large, I know that in some of the buildings, there are some people who don't feel that culture. They don't feel embraced by the district. So just take that to heart. I know the people here tonight have, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's a woman way in the back that keeps trying to come down. There we go.
Hi, my name is Sadra Monada. The one concern of many that I would have is that every high schooler has their set of teachers that mean a lot to them, that have taught them much and been there personally and academically, definitely, everything. And I'm sure that a lot of them have siblings that are on their way to the high school, where I have the younger sibling that's actually graduating this way to come to this one. And for me, the two teachers that have impacted me the most would be, yes, Ms. Marinaccio, but also Mr. Camara, the course teacher. And I have always had great stories to tell my sister about these teachers. They've impacted me greatly. But she's now very sad to hear that they won't be here when she comes. So if there's any concern that I would have is that she'll never get that moment with them, to get to know them, to be led by them, to have that experience with these wonderful people with great hearts. And I say that not only about those two teachers, but about every teacher that every older sibling has had and felt that experience with. I'm sure that they would want the same thing for their siblings. So that's gonna be my concern.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Autumn Muddin, and I just wanted to say that I feel that my teacher, Ms. Marinaccio, that I've had this year, has really impacted me and all of my friends. She has made learning so much fun. We all enjoyed going to her class and we all felt so prepared for the regents. And I feel I did very well. And I was very fortunate to have her. And I am very sad to see her go to the middle school. So I just wanted to ask you to think about your decision about moving so many teachers because I feel that they are doing very well where they are and I don't feel that moving them will help any of us. Thank you.
I'm Jessica McTeer, and I'd just like to say that I had Ms. Marinaccio this year. And she was there for us after school or even before school. And I was saying earlier, she told me stuff like that, as far as the teachers. And during the regents, I got nervous and she came up to me during that. And she sort of said something to me to make me feel motivated. And what I said to her, I want to be proud of you. She said to me that I do make her proud. And she really means something to help us. So if you please reconsider your decision, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Salo. I teach art science here at the high school. I've been doing so for about the last 13 years. I have nothing prepared to say except that the group that I've worked with, you know, in the science department is some of the finest people that I've ever worked with in my entire life. When I see Ms. Marinaccio walk in, she's the first one, one of the first ones in the building and the last ones to leave. She works her heart out. The kids absolutely love her. And I think putting all that aside, we've all heard everything about what's going on and the teacher moves and so on. I come from the business world and even in business they'll tell you that moves this fast, this stressed are no good. They never work. However, if this is the way it has to go, this is the way it has to go. And I don't like it. People in the community, I will tell you, don't like it. I am a building owner here at Beacon. I own six buildings in Beacon. And this worries me because taking all the kids aside and everything, I can walk down Beacon and walk down the streets of Beacon and everybody knows me and I can say hello to everybody and not have my head. But I will tell you, when people see the instability that is going on with regard to teacher moves, with regards to administration movement, with regard to everything that's going on, what do you think that that would do to our building values? Okay, this is just the aside. I know everybody's been talking about the kids and believe me, I love my kids in school. I love them and I tell them that every day. But with regard to building values, when people see all of this, I am very concerned about that. And I hope you are too, Beaconites. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Jodi MacRudo. I have a daughter of four still. I don't know a lot about the situation, so I just really wanna ask a question. All I really know is that a lot of teachers are being moved. I know Ms. Wright pretty well from when she was working at the elementary school. I know that she did a wonderful show, Guys and Dolls, when she was moved up to the middle school and she was really happy to be there. I've heard recently, and most of this is only rumor, I don't really know a lot of facts in the situation, but I've heard that she's being moved back to elementary school and that an elementary school music teacher is being moved to share the middle school and high school. I saw shows at both the middle school and the high school this year with my children. I thought they were both amazing. And I just am curious as to why that decision is made, how it would work for an elementary school teacher to be sharing between the middle school and the high school now and why that's going to be happening and will things like the amazing musicals that the schools have been doing be cut as a result of that? Because I can't imagine how one teacher would be able to do the incredible things that the teachers of these two schools have been able to do this year. So, thanks.
Okay, if everybody has spoken, Dr. Walkley, do you have any replies?
Just thank you, everyone, for your comments and they will be taken under advisement.
Okay, Dr. Walker, your superintendent's report.
Mr. Assemblyman Scartatos has a summer reading program. And if parents are interested, there is a summer reading challenge that is done through the public library. This past week, the public library met with some of our librarians and talked about summer reading programs. And in addition to that, we just received a communication from Chuck Cirilla from State Ed about summer reading in New York libraries. Summer reading is one of the most important things that our students can do because if you are a reader, you are a thinker. And the same skills for reading work for thinking. And so just a reminder of summer reading. And there's lots of programs and book lists for parents to take a look at. The Calico Ball and Sharp trip were mentioned this evening. And I wanna thank the teachers and the administrators who worked on both of those activities from the elementary school. The Calico Ball is always a beautiful display of music and dance. And the Sharp preservation worked well because of the work that the parents and the teachers did working together and coming up with rules. A last announcement is for graduation. There is a change in the time for graduation. Graduation is at nine o'clock at Duchess Stadium. On the calendar, you will see that it is at 10 o'clock. It needed to be changed to nine o'clock because we are sharing the day, the graduation day, with Arlington School District. And Duchess Stadium is playing a game later in the afternoon. So our schedule needed to be slightly adjusted. And communication has gone to parents. It was also put on report cards. We will be sending out a robocall, but just as a reminder, nine o'clock at Duchess Stadium. That's it.
Do we have any board comments tonight?
I have a quick update regarding the policy committee. The policy committee will be meeting tomorrow evening, June 23rd, from 6:30 to 8:30 in the district office conference room. That meeting is open to any community members who are interested in attending. At that meeting, we will be reviewing the wellness policy. I know there was a district-wide committee, so anyone who participated in that committee or otherwise interested in our wellness policy is welcome to join us. Tonight on the agenda, the board will be voting to waive a second reading of the Code of Conduct and approve the Code of Conduct that the policy committee, as well as the district-wide committee, worked to review. As well as, we will do the second reading of our information on security breach, which we had done last time. I also had a couple of announcements that some community members had shared with me about some events. I'll be brief. I know it's late. Currently, there's an evening being planned, Beacon Night. It's a play on words, Beacon Night Out with the Hudson Valley Renegades, on Tuesday, August 4th. That would be to benefit the Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation. And the money will go toward the Calico Ball. People who are interested can look for the Facebook page, Beacon Night Out with the Hudson Valley Renegades, if you're interested in more information. The city of Beacon will be holding a Fourth of July reading of the Declaration of Independence on July 4th at City Hall at 11:00 a.m., and all are welcome. The city of Beacon, in cooperation with many agencies, including the school district, are offering a free program for youth. It's a youth police academy in August from the 10th through the 14th. The applications are available at the Rambut office as well as at the police station. And then I wanted to congratulate some seventh graders that I heard who won a competition called the Hudson Valley Data Jam. I hope I'm saying the right name. Under the direction of Mrs. Lynch and Mrs. Moline, they got the People's Choice Award for a video they made. Called Uptown Bug. It's actually very interesting. Anybody on Facebook can take a look at that as well. And then finally, I just wanted to let people know that there's a Beacon summer lunch program that will be available, free lunch program for students. I understand that they need volunteers to help serve the food, so if you're interested in helping, you can look at cceduchess.org.
Do we have any other comments tonight?
I have some comments, Melissa. I've been sitting here for an hour listening to a public speak. I appreciate the comments and they are being heard. The problem that I have, and I don't have a problem with transfers. I'm an administrator. I know that transfers are an essential part of the educational system. The problem I have is, and Dr. Walkley already admitted it, and I thank you, Dr. Walkley, for doing so, is the rollout. The rollout of the transfers seems like it didn't go as smooth as it could've. It's almost like the state rolling out the Common Core and the APPR. But what I just wanna reiterate is, a couple months ago, when we appointed Dr. Walkley to the permanent superintendency, we didn't follow a process. And it was really disturbing that we didn't follow a process for that component. And now it looks like there's another process that was missed. The process of, one, informing the people in a caring way. The other process that was missed is to have that intimate conversation with the people so they have buy-in to what the greater good of the district is. Teachers sometimes get caught up in the bubble that they're in and they look at what's affecting them. As administrators, they have to look at the greater good of the school and greater good of the district. By the way, what I think has to happen is, there needs to be clear communication as to what that is. And so if you look at the process of the transfers that I'm hearing, it seems like if we look at and change the process, I think that there would be more buy-in because we are trying to do what's good for the district. And Dr. Walkley is very caring. So she admitted that she made a mistake with the rollout of it. And it takes a big person to do that in this large of an audience, which I commend everybody for coming out. But what you gotta realize is that Beacon has had much turnover, especially in the superintendency, as the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, even the building administration. So I do feel for the teachers because they have been the shoulder through all this transition with administration. So I understand that was your stability. I know that Beacon teachers rise up to the challenge and they always do what's in the best interest of the kids. I have three kids in the school, in the district. Two in the school, one three years away. But I'm very confident in the teachers in this district that they will put their full effort forward, no matter where they're assigned. And it just goes to the culture. The city says, "I am Beacon." Well, we are the Beacon City School District. And I think that whatever challenges we face, you guys will step up to it as teachers and employees of the district. Just as everybody up here tries to step up and do what's right for the district because we all have that one common goal. It's the kids. And let's not lose that focus and let's not change it. It is the kids. And everybody wants to do what's best for the kids. And sometimes we may not take the road most traveled. But we have to realize that we call upon, you're being called upon to do something, you do it and you try your best effort. But I think that the systemic issue that I'm hearing, no matter what, it's the process. Where's the clear communication? Where's the process of what we're going to follow? I'm happy to see on the agenda tonight that there is a process to correct it for future transfers that we're gonna be changing language with. And I commend the union, I commend the administration for acknowledging it before we got here. But I think that we need to start having a clear communication with all stakeholders, the public, the teachers, the students, and so forth. Because everybody in here wants to do what's best for kids.
So I just wanted to find out again what the status is of the Marist College partnership that Beacon had established. And I know Dr. Walkley was working on trying to reestablish that relationship to afford students in the district to have that college experience prior to going to school. And I just wanna commend our student athletes. I wanna commend all those that came forward this evening to present their feelings. I think that takes a great deal of effort to do, so you are commended. To the students of this district, I am very proud and honored that you are able to stand up for something that you believe in and articulate that. I think that voice is always important to let people know what your stance is on an issue. So even if you feel like your issue has not been resolved, know that your voice has been heard. So never stop wasting your opinion. Thank you.
Regarding the teacher transfers, a couple of comments that I would like to make. Certainly, I understand that change is always difficult, whether it Certainly, I, I understand the, that change is always difficult, whether it's for the better or for the worse. Uh, nobody likes change, you get comfortable. I mean, uh, I've, my company, I've been in the company for 30 years, we've gone through seven changes of ownership and purchases, and, and just like you, um, there is certain things you have to, you'll have to live with as part of, of a transfer. A new boss, um, having new expectations from that boss, having to learn, uh, what their expectations are, maybe having a different role. And I, I can understand and respect that that's something that's a, a challenge and uncomfortable. Unfortunately, um, somebody said that, comment, if it's not broke, don't, don't fix it. Um, the system, system is broke as far as New York State's concerned. How we judge, whether we agree with it or not, New York State has a, you know, a big hammer, and they're, they're currently saying there are, to us, will there be improvements? They've been saying it for a while. There's a lot of penalties and bad things that happen if it doesn't improve. Um, the board has been asking for improvements for a while, and we get criticized for, uh, the superintendent turnover. That's because we have high expectations, uh, just like our teachers have high expectations. Um, Dr. Walkley has over two years of experience with the district, so for anybody who's worried that she's new to the district and doesn't know what's going on, she's been the assistant curricu-, uh, superintendent for curriculum for, uh, over a year total, probably maybe more than a year, uh, as well as being the superintendent for the past year. Uh, so she has the experience with the district. She's not really new to the district. Um, these decisions were not made in a vacuum by Dr. Walkley. She did confer with the administrators. The administrators may not agree with the decisions, who wants to give her a good teacher? All right? I mean, if you, if you're, you're a principal, you want to stick with the good teachers. So, um, but, but the decisions were not made in a vacuum. I want to thank all of, all of the people that came out tonight, the, uh, the teachers, members of the community, and the students. Uh, I'd be worried if there was no outcry, if there weren't people coming down saying, "Why are you moving good teachers?" Uh, that would make it look like a wrong decision, if, if no one came down and protested the very fact that people came down here and, and talked about how great the teachers that are being moved are. Um, in some ways, it gives me more comfort, uh, and I have, have my children had a lot of your, you as, as teachers as well. I, I listened to the, to these students and, and the, at, at the high school saying, "Please don't, uh, move our teachers." I, I listened to the same thing from the people at the, at the middle school, "Please don't move our teachers." Uh, so I, I guess I can say, "Don't work." I mean, you're, you're getting great teachers, wh- whichever school you're at, and the same thing with the elementary school. These are teachers who have strengths that are, are needed at certain schools. And, and so I think that, uh, you know, I would expect that, uh, you're, you're all good teachers, you're all caring teachers, you're, you're all going to do the best thing for the kids. And, and I have conf- confidence that just as you challenge your, your students and expect the best from them, that you're going to rise and, and, and meet the challenges too. So I, thank you for that.
Melissa, can I just add to something, Bill? It triggered my, uh, thinking there. The, the other component of the transfers is, is that it's such a large group of teachers, of 27, which if you look at it, is 10% of the total district, but not one school is going to have more than 10%. I think the middle school is going to have a little bit more. The only thing is, and, and Bill, you triggered my mind when you said this, is, we're being judged by a state, which the state has a faulty system set up for, for evaluating. Their, this legislation is actually, they were meeting on it, and they, uh, sent something out for the APPR, which is going to be changing. But they're not addressing the true problem, which isn't the APPR, which isn't the, the test, it, it's, who's making the test? It's not like the region's exams at the high school, where teachers have input into the testing, test-making. You know, they, they have an outside system making the test. The only thing is, I worry about is, having such a large amount of transfers could create a panic. Um, and that's not what we want to do, because we are a, we are a, a focused district, and not that we're going to that next level, because we've been maintaining, we've been staying there. Um, but I don't want these moves to create panic, and I think what we have to do is, and I'd ask Dr. Walkley to, please, set up a system to, to measure the effectiveness of these transfers, to see if they're working or not working.
Thank you. Any other comments tonight? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items 12.02 through 12.03, and items 12.05 through 12.23.
Second. Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. We have a motion to approve addendum.
Motion to approve the SMOA with ETA, 13.01.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. We have a motion for the second addendum.
Motion to approve SMOA with ETA, item 13.02.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. We have a motion for executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual, and the board is not expected to take action after executive session.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you all for coming out.